Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's council meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We'll call this meeting to order. Do we have anybody from EAM here tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Herman, would you mind?
I don't know.
Please join us and follow that with the pledge.
Good job.
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings today on this meeting and on this holy week of Easter, whatever you say, whatever religion may celebrate this week, but we really ask that you watch over our meeting tonight and guide us to make good decisions that are, you know, in the best interest of our city and our citizens. And we also ask that you watch over our citizens here in Casa Grande and all over the world, especially our first responders here and those defending our freedoms overseas. A special blessing tonight over, you know, the city of Paris and just the world for the horrible tragedy at Notre Dame and watch over them, help them get that world landmark restored. And we just thank you very much for the freedoms that we exercise here in this country that allow us to be together tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Donna. Gloria, please let the roll call show that everyone is present. Item C, Mr. Herman.
Minute-wise, we have, we have two of the commissioners at Med and the council. So I move approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from April first as presented and except for the record, the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes from March fifth and the Park and Recreation Advisory Board minutes from February seventh as presented.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Item D, claims against the city. I'll take a motion to approve.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the claims dated March twenty-seventh and April ninth as presented or through April ninth as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, no, Matt Herman abstained.
We got eight bucks or something.
Okay, item E, meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes to the agenda tonight?
We have none.
Some staff? Anyone on the council? Okay, seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting agenda is approved. No special presentations, so we'll move right to item G, consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant McBride.
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving to item H, is public comments. This is a point in the meeting that we will open the floor to anyone from the public who would like to address the council. Just keep in mind that any one who does come forward, we'd like you to give your name and try and keep your comments to three minutes. And we also cannot respond to it since it is not agendized item, but we can direct staff to follow up. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the floor and we'll move on to item K, ordinances and resolutions. We'll consider the final adoption of ordinance number one-one-seven-eight dot three-nine-six. Selena? Or Suri, oh, no, Gloria, you were gonna...
Mr. Mayor, this item appears for a second reading. We have ordinance number one-one-seven-eight point three-nine-six. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment here at Palmas, Casa Grande planned area development adopted for property generally located at the southwest corner of Cortson Road and Tracca Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I, I move approval of ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-three-nine-six as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Okay, item K, consider resolution number five-one-seven-zero. Mr. Tice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So if you recall, this is the adoption of the two thousand and eighteen building and fire codes, which you heard at your April first meeting, but postponed. And you postponed it over some concerns and the need for some additional staff work on, on two items, where basically it was the pollution control unit requirements and the IBC and the annual facility permit provisions, which were also known as the industrial registrant permit. As we, as staff looked into both of these issues, we, we thought that we probably also needed to clarify for you a little bit more of the requirements of appendix L, the firefighter air replenishment system. So what we'd like to do is just talk to you briefly about these three topics, and of course, we could answer any further questions or provide additional information if you, if you want it, but we're going to limit our presentation to these three topics. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Tardif, our building official.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The pollution control unit was known as the PCU in abbreviation. When we presented this to call it mandatory item, due to a little more research, the language in the code book didn't read right, so I did a code interpretation call with ICC directly. What I found out was that they had left some language out of that, that paragraph. So the words that they left out is where provided. That was really key because what that says is these are not mandatory. If they do choose to run it, then they would need to follow those requirements. So that was a big clarification on that, so that's not a mandatory item. So I'll move on to the, the annual facilities permit. We did meet with some parties of interest on this topic, and what we've decided to do at this point with council's approval, we have decided to remove chapter thirty-six temporarily. What that means is we will go forward without chapter thirty-six, but what we will do is we will meet with all parties involved. We'll rewrite chapter thirty-six to hopefully better clarify some things and maybe be a little better alignment with the, with the parties involved for that. And there are several, several businesses that are, you know, using that industrial permit, what it was known as now annual facilities permit. So we, that's our, that's our motion, and we would like to go forward with that, and we will be diligent in meeting rewriting that. What we'll do then is bring it back to the Board of Appeals for approval. Once we get through that process, then we'll bring it back to council for council's approval.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for doing that. It's most appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So our last meeting, we discussed the firefighter air replenishment systems. I've updated the presentation to give you a little better understanding and grasp of what is actually involved here and how it will actually impact the businesses here in Casa Grande. So basically, an overview of the system is it is a high-pressure stainless steel piping system that's installed to allow firefighters to replenish their air bottles throughout. As you can see in the top left, it's depicting two firefighters actually refilling directly into their SCBA's while they're on their back. The bottom-left picture shows some of a mobile air unit. We have one here, so if one is available, you can hook it up to the system, much like a fire truck would support a sprinkler system in a building, and it'd be able to assist it there. And then the bottom right shows a, just a standard system installed there with a breathing air cylinder attached to that. So I reached out to some colleagues around the valley. Chandler, Peoria, as well as Northwest Fire District, as well as Gila River have installed these, excuse me, adopted appendix L. Gila River has actually installed this in their casino, and it's operating. The, the main purpose behind this is to help reduce manpower. As we go vertical in these large buildings, the number of firefighters required increases immensely. A high-rise, typical high-rise fire, you could expect a hundred to a hundred and fifty firefighters to, to do that. So what does this mean for us here in Casa Grande? We better define with the language in the amendments what actually triggers this. And the language here that I'm proposing falls in line with all of the other jurisdictions in the area that have adopted this. The first trigger would be a building with an occupied floor more than seventy-five feet above the lowest fire department vehicle access or a high-rise building. This is the exact definition in the fire code. The second trigger would be three or more floors below grade, so we're going subterranean, and with an area in excess of twenty thousand feet. The appendix would not affect any buildings that we currently have in, in the permitting process or, or be retroactive. It's looking forward into the future as the city grows, getting these systems to ensure the safety of the occupants of these types of buildings.
Okay. The, the requirement of occupied floor located more than seventy-five feet above the lowest level of vehicle access, does that mean a ladder and then seventy-five feet above that?
Mr. Mayor and council member Hattleson, yes, you're correct. So if we have a building and the foundation is here.
Uh huh.
And the drive access is down here, it's seventy-five feet from where the tires of the vehicle rest up.
Not the ladder.
Doesn't include the ladder.
Not the ladder itself, but where, where the vehicle would rest at, at the plane.
Okay, is that approximately a building or...
It's about a five-story building, sir.
About a five-story, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys, just real quick for the PCU as well, but I had a question specifically about this, too. I'm thinking of specifically the Phoenix Mart Building, because this doesn't have anything for square footage of just a single story. Am I right? I'm just thinking of a large building where you have to go way inside, you know, where the distance, you know, necessarily up. Yeah, exactly, like the Phoenix Mart Building.
Mr. Mayor and council member Herman, that's a great question. This appendix is specifically designed to address the challenges of vertical or high-rise firefighting operations. Typically, when we're on the ground floor, we have staging areas set up, and in larger buildings like Phoenix Mart, we start to take into the type of building construction. So how long can we stay inside while the fire is burning? But this is specifically addressing either severely below grade or tall buildings, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, guys. Is that it, Paul?
That's it.
Those are three items, okay? Then can, if there's no other questions, can I get a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Resolution number five-one-seven-zero. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as public record certain document pertaining to the city's building, health, and safety code and the two thousand and nineteen amendments thereto.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five-one-seven-zero as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, move to item K three.
Mayor, there's also an ordinance attached to this item.
Oh, I blew right by it. Okay, can I get a ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number one-three-nine-seven-point-zero-eight-point-two-eight. An ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending sections eight-point-one-six-point-zero-one-zero, fifteen-point-two-eight-point-zero-one-zero, and fifteen-point-three-zero-point-zero-one-zero of and adding chapter fifteen-point-one-eight to the city of Casa Grande municipal code concerning the city's current building, health, and safety codes, adopting various updated building, health, and safety codes and revisions of the two thousand and nineteen amendments to the city of Casa Grande building, health, and safety codes, providing penalties for violations thereof, establishing severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of ordinance number one-three-nine-seven-point-zero-eight-point-two-eight.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, now, K three, resolution five-one-seven-three.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council accept the transit development plan. Work on the development of a formal study and development of the transit plan begun nearly two years ago. We did do a study session and presented that, that, that Plan Two City Council at a study session on February fourth, and the, the Sun Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization Board approved the Casa Grande Transit Development Plan in January of two thousand and nineteen, and at this time, we're respectfully asking the mayor and city council to accept this Casa Grande Transit Development Plan. But it's important to note that by accepting this plan, we are not obligating the city to take any future steps towards a transit plan. It just outlines the steps that we need to take to develop that plan, and all future steps will be brought back to council.
All right, we'd have to take additional action to fund it.
This has no funding implementations. We did not plan on re-presenting the study session items, so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? We've seen it, what, three times? Mr. Powell.
I just want to tell Lisa I'm in favor of this.
I know you are, accepting it, right?
Thank you, Kevin. Oh, Lisa, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to take the time, you know, like, like Kevin said, this is something that's been going on for two years, and there was a lot of people involved in, in putting this plan together. You know, I just want to thank the community for going out to the focus group, you know, to the, the meetings we had, all the stakeholders. People dedicated a lot of time and energy to, to help and, you know, put this together.
And our director, SCMBO Irene, and, and also Dwayne from the city, so.
Right.
Thank you both.
And Mike Henderson is here. He was on the, on the committee, so thank you, Mike. But, you know, there was, you know, twenty-something people that were involved in this for the last two years, so I'm excited that we're accepting it, and I really hope that this doesn't just sit on the shelf and we really take a look at it again, but I did want to thank everyone.
Yes, ditto that statement. Anybody else? Okay, can I get a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Resolution number five-one-five-three. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the Casa Grande Transit Development Plan for the city of Casa Grande.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five-one-seven-three as presented.
Second.
All right, doesn't matter if Gloria used the wrong number, does it?
It's five-one-seven-three, correct, Laura?
Five-one-seven-three, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item L, public hearings. First item on the agenda is L one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is a rezoning request by the Casa Grande Valley Historical Society to rezone some of the holdings that they have in our downtown area into the B three zone. They currently are zoned R two and B two, and they're requesting all their properties be zoned B three. You can see a little bit of the history of the properties on your screen, going back to nineteen twenty-seven. You're probably very familiar with, with many of these properties. This is a location of the, of the properties that are under consideration. Their address is on Park Avenue, Florence, where the museum itself is, and then Center Avenue, which is a, another property that they own, but they're all contiguous to one The current zoning for these properties, as I mentioned, is R two and B, and B two, and they're requesting all properties be zoned into the B three zone. Our B three zone district is our, one of our more intense commercial districts that allow reduced building setbacks, so will give the, the Historical Society the most flexibility in terms of using these properties. The properties are surrounded by commercial zoning, and they're also within our community center area of our general plan. So they do comply with the general plan. We find that the zoning, requested zoning is very compatible with the surrounding land uses and surrounding zoning. The last bullet point points out the fact that some of the existing buildings are legal not conforming in terms of their setback. They do not meet the setbacks of the B two zone. Of course, they've been there for a long time, probably well before the B two zoning setbacks were imposed, but this zone change actually brings them into conformance with their setbacks and brings them into compliant with the zoning requirements. The community center land use category that these properties are, are located within is sort of this land use category that covers our downtown area and the corridors of Florence and Penal Avenue. It's a zoning category, excuse me, a general plan category that allows for commercial uses, office uses, and high-density residential as well. We did engage in a public notification in comment period. You can see our efforts listed on the screen, and I think we, it says that we only received one inquiry. When the planning commission held their public hearing on this, we had no testimony at the public hearing. No opposition was, was voiced. Planning commission did vote to forward a favorable, favorable recommendation on the zone change to the city council, so we would recommend that council approve the zone change from B two and R two to B three.
Questions, anyone? It's pretty straightforward. This helps them on their parking requirements and a bunch of other stuff, too, doesn't it?
It does, Mr. Mayor. There's more flexibility in terms of parking in the B three zone as well. Definitely setbacks, yes.
John would love these areas because they are urban.
They're, they're getting...
Okay, no questions, then? There are no further questions, then I will actually open the floor because this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, then I will close the floor and we will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria. No further discussion, right? You guys are all, everybody okay? Okay, please.
Ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-three-nine-seven. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance one-one-seven-eight in its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from multifamily residential and general business to general to central business on properties located at seven-six-six North Park Avenue, seven-one-five North Central, Center Avenue, and one-one-zero-West Florence Boulevard, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number one-seven-eight-point-three-nine-seven as presented.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hattleson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes, for John.
Mayor Pro Tim McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, no executive session tonight, so I'm going to go right to item N in reports, and I'm going to go first.
Ooh!
You're going to take all of them.
We can all cross everything off our list.
Yeah, there we go. We can go dinner.
First, first of all, I want to really thank everybody for coming out to the State of the City address we held at the, at our new beautiful community recreation center. And Steve Hardesty, thanks, big shout-out to you and staff for getting that all put together, and, and Phil for helping me put it all together, too. Thank you, thank you, guys. And a lot of other people, too. Hayden Construction, they really did a, a heck of a job getting it ready, really. So we had actually had, we had to get occupancy permit for the foyer and for the meeting room. Good thing the city was leaning with us.
Do you know somebody?
But it was, it was a great event, and I really wanted to thank everybody for coming out. I did meet the next day with the ASU Science and Technology Center. I think I mentioned that last time in my reports. I have, did meet with them. It was a very good meeting. They are extremely interested, and the next meeting we're going to have, we're going to come down here and tour a few buildings and check a few opportunities out to see if we can't work with, with the governor's budget and, and with, you know, Lucid and CAC and really kind of put this training center together. Larry and I did go over and look at the district office. The, the high school district is, is moving all of their desert winds over to their campuses. So that whole bottom floor of that building, it's, it's almost fifty thousand square feet. It's huge.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, I think you put two or three businesses in there, but, you know, I mean, what, how would that be to put like an incubator kind of program in there and a, and a, and a technology school and a training facility? I mean, it could be amazing. So anyway, that's kind of in the works. Last week was Crime Victims Rights Week, and we did a proclamation on Monday up, up at the safety building, thanks to the chief and his, his guys that were there. And then we also did a candlelight vigil on Friday, Friday, the, the twelfth, that was, that was really nice and, and well-attended. And it was very impactful, kind of, kind of made me, made me tear up because, just to see all the people and the candles and the, it was, it was really a nice event. We had a Penal Regional Transportation Authority Board meeting last week. Just as an update, the attorney who was trying the case for us, for the county, is now working for the lieutenant governor, or not lieutenant governor, our state attorney, AG Mark Bernovich. So he's leaving, and basically, we were hiring a new attorney. But there's also, just an update, there's about fourteen million dollars in the bank now from that collection of that tax. I had all the mayors from around the county here in town this past Wednesday, so they were all duly impressed with everything we have going on, community center and, and all of our, Neon Park that we, you know, we were just going to open up, so I got to kind of show the, the community off a little bit. The chamber search committee is still moving forward with hiring a permanent president for the chamber, and they have, I think, three candidates that they've narrowed it down to in terms of interviewing, so just a little update on... to in terms of interviewing, so just a little update on that. And then I won't talk about a whole lot more because then you guys won't have anything to talk about, but the Neon Park lighting was Thursday night, you know, at, at 7:30, and I was, it was, it was overwhelming, there were, there were that many people out there. There had to have been 500 people it looked like out in the, in the, in the area, so it was so good to see everybody out there, really kind of embracing that whole Neon Park. And earlier that evening, we did do all the police volunteer awards, so I want to thank our police volunteers that were all recognized last Saturday night, since a lot of them were leaving, so they kind of do it this time of year, every year. But without them, I mean, the number of hours that they put in and the amount of money really they save the city is, is unbelievable, so a big shout out to them and a thank you to them, and to the police department for really, really managing that and organizing it. So, Mr. Powell, you want to go next?
I would love to go next. The, I want to say the same thing on the volunteers, police appreciation. So many of those people are really dedicated, as we found out, I mean, they, one lady came up four times, I think, and she was, she was a neat lady, I mean, they're involved, they like it, and they thank, they're thankful they're being able to do it. And I think it's, it's just really a amazing thing, and, and as you say, if you converted the hours they put in voluntarily and had to pay those hours, we'd be really having to go back to the budget and find out where we'd get that kind of money, but.
Couldn't do what we do.
No, I know, and the, as I say, I was, I made it back while it was still dark outside, and, from the, going from one to the other, and it was amazing when those lights turned on, and they just, they kind of have a happy essence about them, and everybody there was smiling, and, and so I think that's got a lot of promise, and we'll get more signs up as time goes on, and, and that's probably what I've got.
Donna?
Just a couple things, kudos to the police department, they had Public Safety Day on the 6th, and there was lots of people out there. The explorers did a great job, Thomas Anderson and all his crew were amazing, there was a lot of people, and so that was something that the city, and, and also for so many agencies to go out there and be able to, to share what they do, it was really important. Kudos to you, the State of the City was really good, the, the videos and everything was just really well done. Neon Park, I, we made it right at the end. We had our 30th anniversary gala for CASA. Thank you to the mayor for the proclamation, we took care of that, and thank you to, to Mary for coming and sharing that, we had a couple hundred folks out there with the chief justice, and it was, it was good, and it kind of culminated Victims Rights Week, and Volunteer Month, and, and all of that, and I will say that the chief justice said that he needs to come back down and see the Neon Park, so that's good. So it's been busy, but I'm glad that week's over.
Just reminder, the Youth Commission Day of Shredding, Saturday the 27th, at the Penal location of First American Credit Union, not at the Rodeo Road location anymore, but back at the original location, so we're working on traffic flows there. You know, the, the State of the City was really neat, and one of my favorite parts was the new I Heart CG shirts we came up with, and, and Dorothy Powell started, used to have the I Heart Cass Graham buttons, so went back to that, and we are coming up with a, a plan to distribute more so that we can get some fundraising and stuff done with those, so hang tight because I've had a.
Some of the originals.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people ask about the shirts, and they will be coming out, so.
Kid sizes too.
And kid sizes, and I was told we need women's sizes as well.
Styles.
I guess you can, yes, women's cuts and styles. Wonder who told me that? So, Rena, Rain was here earlier, and she said, "I can't stay because tonight's the first night with the timer" at the Neon Park, so she went to make sure that it was going.
Coming on at the right time.
Yep, and that, that same night I heard at the mall, I didn't make it, but they had a band and food truck at the, the Promenade Mall, and they said they had about 400, 500 people out there as well.
I was there.
Oh, did you go? Okay, sorry Lisa, then.
I went at the end.
Yep, I'll let you talk about it then. But neat thing I heard tonight from the mayor is the, the ASU technical campus.
Science and Technology.
So he doesn't probably know this, but it's like full circle for that building, because that was our VOTEC building when I went to high school here, so it's kind of coming all the way back around to a place for technical training, and it is a very big building with some neat places for that, so I'm glad that's a neat reuse.
Mr. Peters.
Yep, hopefully that will work out. So, with that, all I got.
All right, thanks Matt.
So I did attend the CASA dinner and that, and I have to tell you that Donna looked amazing, and you did a great job, you really did, it was a great food, it's my first time that I've really been to an event of that sort at Ropes and Ranch, and they did a good job. And from what Donna said, they pulled efforts from around the county, which is really nice to do because it's a countywide set with a really nice couple. Also, my sister is in training to be a CASA volunteer, and it's an amazing commitment and that, and I just really applaud all of them, and I was there more for the financial support of it. Did make it over for the lighting of the Neon Park. You know, you look at it, and you saw the renditions and all of this and everything else, and when the lights went on, and they didn't go on at one time, they just kind of went and went and went, and it really, why is it that Valley National Bank is the one that really, when they lit that one up, I was like, wow, I remember Valley National Bank. So it, this adds such a unique, I, I, this is so unique, we have all of these places that have antiques and, and wineries and everything else, we have a neon sign park, and so I'm hoping that it, that there's going to be some entertainment and some businesses that will build up around it. Also want to continue to applaud the new manager of the, of the mall, she continues to, I mean, I don't know how she does it with so much effort, and so I didn't get out there the other night, but I was out there Saturday afternoon, and they were having another event with the co, they had three food trucks, and then inside the World Market, they had local vendors and that, so they were.
And she was at our event Saturday night.
Yeah, I don't know how, where she gets that. Then also, on the, on the neon sign park that we're still working on pavers, there's still opportunities for people, just, you can get online and you can order, and it's memorial paver, so if you have someone that, that you loved or want to celebrate, and that is, this is another source of income, there's still a lot of, there's the maintenance issues, and there's keeping the lights on and that sort of thing, so the pavers are really going to help finance that. And finally, I just want to really thank the mayor for all his efforts for, to, for promoting the science and tech, and not just promoting it, but just actually going out there and, and pulling these people in. The, our, our youth are, are amazing people, and they really, really need that support, and, and I appreciate you doing that, it's going to make a big difference to our community.
Got to make it happen.
Yep.
Bob?
Yes, sir. Wanted to give a reminder, I spoke about this two weeks ago, but my church, Crossroads Church of Casa Grande, is putting on a free concert this Saturday night at the Casa Grande Union High School Football Stadium. Everything's free, just come out and enjoy the music. But I also wanted to say we're having, at the same stadium, we're having a Sunday service for everyone in the city. Obviously, it'd be nice to go to your own church, but if you don't have a church to go to, please come out and see us, starts at nine o'clock in the morning. If you have kids or grandkids, please bring them, we have a helicopter coming in, and we're going to dump 17,000 plastic eggs on that football field, so should, should be a, a good time. Also, Mayor, I'm glad you went, you went first and told about the many things you've done in the last couple of weeks. There's no way I can attend all of those things, and the, and the handful that I do attend, you're always there, and I'm so thankful that we have you in that seat, you're, you're a great representative of our, of our city, and, and a good leader, so.
And lots of energy.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Bob, thank you.
I guess I should just say ditto, right? Is there anything else to say? I didn't say about the randos. I left that for you.
Now you know what I feel like when I get done.
No, that's fine, and, you know, and I'm not going to go through, of course, everything, but the only thing, you know, on that, on that police volunteer dinner, you know, I did write down the, the times, you know, the hours, and they said there was 53,000 hour, volunteer hours that equated to $595,000, so, you know, it just amazed me, it really did amaze me, and I really wanted to make sure I went to that event, because these are people that just volunteer their hours, their time, and we're not talking, you know, five hours a week, I mean, like, like Dick said, some of these people were in different part, you know, volunteer in different departments and dedicate so many hours, so, and I know one woman just said, you know, gosh, it really means a lot that the, you know, the city council and the mayor are here, which surprised me, because it's like it's the least we can do, you know, but of course, everyone can come because there were so many different activities, but Wendy did a fantastic job, you know, the food was great, the place was great, and, and to treat, you know, these people, you know, with respect and, you know, appreciation really means a lot, with, with that many hours and money, it just really means a lot, so she, please tell Wendy thank you, because I know they gave her a standing ovation, so she, she really did a lot, so, um, the, yeah, I did go to the concert at, at the Promenade, and, and, you know, and the reason I went, you know, Mary, I know you mentioned it, and I was out at the mall earlier in the day, and there was like 500 signs all over.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Megan put them everywhere.
Free mu, you know, music, food, food truck, every, you know, couple, you know, inches it seemed like, but no, there were signs everywhere, so after the police volunteer, I went over to the Neon Park, and I literally ran to the concert because I wanted to support her, and there were several hundred people out there, and the food trucks, if you've ever been, tried that Waffle Love food truck? Oh my gosh, I shouldn't have tried it, but, but, but great, and, you know, it, it was just so exciting to see everyone out there dancing and hanging out, and they had their dogs and kids, and, so it was, it was a great event, just a really, really busy day, so. And then just a reminder, on the 29th, since we have that extra Monday this, this period, we have this CG Helps Resource Center is opening, so I hope you guys can all come on the 29th from 11 to 1, they're going to have like drinks and tours and stuff like that, so, again, this is something that's been going on for a while, and a lot of time and dedication, so hope you guys can come over to the, um, park, to the, the Resource Center, and bring friends, anyone you want, so, that's it.
All right, thank you Lisa. Um, I, my mayor's prerogative, I forgot a couple things.
Or you had your turn.
But I'm in charge, so.
Yes, you are.
Take one of those if that sounds you.
This is, Promise for the Future is the, is the program that CAC has, if you're in eighth grade or you sign up, and they're signing up this time of year, and if they graduate with, I think, a C average from high school, they actually can enroll, enroll in two years of free school from CAC. So their fundraiser is going on right now, and it's, and they're calling it 25, oh my gosh, 25 Changes Lives, and what that stands for is that if everybody in Penal County donated $25, that would give them about $10 million to put in their endowment, so their goal is $10 million in the endowment, because that'll keep, that'll keep their, this endowment up, and it'll keep paying kids to, you know, for their tuition to go to school. So it's a really good program, I encourage everybody, if you haven't seen this, you can check with CAC, or I have some extras in my office.
And this, and it encourages the students to go right, because you have to go right out of, after you graduate, to go to CAC, and I have heard several students state that they would not have gone on to college if there hadn't been that little bit of pressure of saying, "I can go to CAC tuition free, but I got to go now." So it is, I agree wholeheartedly with the mayor.
There's also, also a, a grand opening this Thursday, the 18th, it's called Ecos Med Clinic, we're doing a ribbon cutting, it's inside a Safeway, and it's actually an IA, Artificial Intelligence Medical Examining Apparatus, so it'll be interesting to see it. It's at 10:30 in the morning in the Safeway here in town, if you're interested. And then Tuesday and Wednesday, I will be up at Nicola World, so I'm going to go to their presentations on the Nicola truck, truck manufacturer, so I'll be up there. Census 2020, don't forget.
Oh, excellent.
Tax day. Oh, yeah, and Happy Easter. Happy Easter, Happy Easter. Meeting adjourned.
There's a motion.